Counsel, today's date is Friday, February 12th, 2024. Today's invocation will be given by Reverend Dwight Benoit of the Magnolia Missionary Baptist Church here of Beaumont, Texas. If everyone would please silence your cellphones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel, to each of you. I do declare, this is the day that the Lord has made. We shall rejoice and be glad in it. Let us pray. With praise and thanksgiving do we approach Thee, dear God our Father. Our iniquities have urged, and You've granted us this privilege. And as recipients of Your gracious joy, You've chosen to bring us near, and for this we are truly grateful. We're mindful even now of the so many others who are without lights, water, damaged homes, displaced families, local businesses shut down by Your mighty will, hurricane waters and winds. And we pray Your mercy and Your grace on Thy behalf, and our hands be on our knees to help. For it is them now, us today or tomorrow. Our convictions remain, unless You, dear Lord our God, help, build, watch, and we follow You, all is in vain. Our city of Beaumont is Yours. Our boundaries You have set. Our territories You have allotted. Our leaders You've elected, and even some You've privileged us to select. And yet it's evident, and is no doubt, You live among us. Emmanuel is Your name, God with us. Thank You, dear God, for our Mayor, Mr. Roy West, our Council leaders and attorney, who set their sails every day, carrying these allotted cargoes on these restless seas of time. We thank You afresh for our City Manager, Mr. Kenneth Aura Williams, those appointed committees, citizens, candidates as applicants, and praying saints for the massive work He has done and appointed to do, as we seek Your will for the leadership of Police Chief here in Beaumont. We know, as we trust You with all of our hearts, and lean not to our own understandings, but acknowledge You, You shall direct our paths. We know, we may cast the lots and voice our likes, but You determine how they fall. So guide us today in this another council session, decision-making session. Guide us, oh, thy great Jehovah. We are weak, but Thou art mighty. Hold us with our powerful hands. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus the Christ, we ask and we pray. Amen, amen, and amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
After public comments, we will recess into executive session to consider matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of public officer or employee in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Government Code two-wit, specifically candidates for Police Chief Kyra Joy Hope, Jason Plunkett, Troy Price, and Bretta Steinbrenner. Now is the time for public comment. This is for any citizen who wishes to speak to make public comments. As we enter into public comment, I would like to remind everyone, as we follow our rules of public decorum, people will refer to the candidates as candidates, and for clarity, just refer to the candidate from what city you refer to. City council members and staff should be referred to by their title. There will be no yielding of time to others. The city clerk will call your name when it is your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green lights will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. I'd like to remind you that the counsel and myself cannot respond when you're making comments, but someone from the office will contact you.
And Daniel Ozan.
Good evening, everyone. I would be the first. Okay, name is Daniel, first name Daniel, last name Ozan, 4805 Siltus Street, Beaumont, Texas, 77703. Okay, you know, I really didn't want to say anything, but I was moved to say something. You know, on the way here, and as I was sitting in my seat, I always asked myself this question. So what I had to say matter, to what the community had to say matter. That's my question. Because I've been in Beaumont now since 89, and been in a couple of meetings, school board and so forth. But it's like when most decisions are made, even when we voice our opinion, it doesn't matter because they seem to make the choice that they're going to make, how they want to make it, and the way they want to make it. Now, I'm not sure how the vetting process went, but to me, wasn't it in doubt? I personally don't think so. Because if so, again, for me, Mr. Plunkett, if I pronounce his name wrong, Plunkett.
Please refer to him as candidate.
Candidate, I'm sorry, Mr. Candidate Plunkett.
You know, candidate from the city which they're from. Just.
Okay. Okay, Beaumont. I feel that the process went as well, that the candidate wouldn't be amongst the four. Again, just the way I feel. And also, I think that whomever is chosen should be someone from outside the city limits, not Beaumont, not Port Arthur, not Bridge City. Why, for me, they have no ties to the city, no favors to do for anyone, none of them bother. But again, for me, that's my stance, and that's who I stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Tom Noyola.
Strong morals and honesty demonstrated by our next Beaumont chief, along with the integrity that he must have. This agency, the Beaumont Police Department, will be identified through its mission, his integrity, his leadership. Without integrity, there is little hope for trust and legitimacy to be perceived by the officers as well as the community. So counsel, I will ask that in moving forward, you reflect on five areas of concentration in making your decision. Number one, communication. Your chief should be one who is able to seek first to understand and then seek second to be understood. Second, your chief, our chief, needs to be held accountable, both in the city, our community, as well as internally. Third, interpersonal skills. Through his leadership, he has to have the ability, the power, and the skill to connect with people in a community such as diverse as ours. And the last two, I would ask that they probably go hand in hand, and counsel, I ask you to look and select the chief for the city of Beaumont that walks with kindness and has a sense of humility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is it Trevor?
Treva.
Treva, I'm sorry, Treva Johnson.
Hello, my name is Treva Johnson. I live at 1428 Wall Street, Beaumont, Texas. I'm a, I want to stand here today as a concerned citizen. I first want to say that I think it's absolutely tragic that we have to have this conversation in 2024 in relation to the candidate from Beaumont, Texas, and the position that is being run for. I would have to say that what looms in my mind is the core values of ethics that I would hope the city of Beaumont adheres to, and what the candidate from Beaumont presents in such an influential position, how would that benefit the city in any aspect? The deplorable events which the candidate has been associated with is absolutely petrifying. Being that there's already such a high temperature with race relations in the United States of America, I don't feel that putting a person in office who has an unapologetic history of racism and discrimination would be a healthy or wise decision for Beaumont, Texas. The demographics are quite diverse here. As of 2020, we had over 115,000 people, where the black race dominates the population at 45.3%. The white race is 28.8%, and white, Hispanic, and non-white Hispanic and other Hispanics are about 20%. Surely you can see the conflict of interest here if this candidate takes a seat as the Chief of Police in Beaumont, Texas. I ask you to take a critical look at the ramifications of putting such a person in this caliber of office. This is not the way we should go. This is not the direction the city should go. I feel like it would make a strong statement if the candidate were to be denied the ability to run for this office. I am a woman who believes in second chances. However, I think it's safe to say that this candidate has had a plethora of chances and has repeatedly proven that he is not only racist, but a bigot and someone who does not deserve to hold the title of a person who has taken an oath to protect and serve all people regardless of race. Having him in any position of authority is a haphazard and completely unacceptable. In an era where we are collectively seeking to move forward from past grievances, putting this man in office will foster a critical setback for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vivian Todd.
I'm going to ask that people only speak when they're at the podium. Thank you.
Vivian Todd, 4325 Thomas Park, Beaumont. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, for hearing us today in this special meeting. Mr. Williams, thank you for asking me to serve on the Police Search Committee. It was an honor to serve. I'm here to support the candidate from Beaumont. The benefits of having a career Beaumont police officer who's gone through the ranks is important. He already has the contacts, he knows many of us throughout the city. He's ready to start day one. He doesn't need 100 days to get going. It's like the hire within theory, like with the sheriff. His dedication to his family, to the police union support, the chief of police support, the DA's office, among others, his community involvement speaks for itself. I'm a fourth-year generation of this community. I have a real estate business here. I've raised a family here. I'm a product of Beaumont Public Schools, Beaumont High, and I want the best for this. I do a lot of relocation with oil and gas positions and other incoming families, and I want to be able to be confident on crime level, our educational system, so these families will move in. And I'm not representing all of the realtors, but many of us, many of my family, friends, want the candidate from Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Luallin.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel. My name is Aaron Luellen. I'm the Secretary of the Beaumont Police Officers Association, and I'm here speaking on behalf of its 249 members. I'm here to reiterate the association's support for the candidate from Beaumont, being the best candidate for the next city of Beaumont Chief of Police. As police officers, we investigate and report facts. In light of recent allegations circulating in social and mainstream media accusing the candidate from Beaumont of racial discrimination, I challenge all interested parties to research all the facts, obtain documents, and learn the truth of what transpired 20 years ago. The facts show then candidate, the candidate from Beaumont counseled a former officer for a policy violation and did not feel the incident warranted anything more than the counsel. The candidate from Beaumont never filed an ID complaint. The ID complaint was initiated by command staff without the candidate from Beaumont's involvement. Any adverse action to the former officer came from a level beyond the authority of the candidate from Beaumont. The arbitrator himself wrote, there was no evidence to indicate any racial discrimination against him. In addition, the candidate from Beaumont was filed on in Internal Affairs for not filing the complaint against that officer, and the Internal Affairs investigator determined that the candidate from Beaumont did not violate any department policy. The candidate from Beaumont was cleared by Internal Affairs, EEOC, and an independent arbitrator of any wrongdoing, and we find these 11th-hour smear tactics to his name appalling. I am wholly disappointed in community leaders and local personalities who only pick certain documents and commit political extortion to further their cause and neglect the findings of the entire documents. I have been made aware that the City Manager, Mayor, and members of counsel have been provided with the entirety of these documents, and look forward to them relying on facts and not smear tactics when confirming the candidate from Beaumont as the next Chief of Police of the city of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to botch this, but I'm going to try Sohaab Jabbar. Can you pronounce your first name? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sohaab Jabbar. So you were pretty close. Members of the council, Mayor, and everyone else present, thank you for the time. My name is Sohaab Jabbar. I was born and raised in Beaumont, Texas. As my background is of a Pakistani nature, my father was an immigrant who came to this country without even having the ability to speak the language. And I have had the privilege of growing up here and understanding the benefits that this country, the city, can provide to a person. I've done all of my schooling within southeast Texas. I went to Dishman Elementary School, Vincent Middle School, Westbrook, and all the way through Lamar, as well as University of Houston. The reason why I have come today is, many of you may not know me, but within this area, within my community, I am well-known. I am also a representative, not a representative here today, but I am a board member of the Islamic Society of Triplex, as well as I run a family business that has been around for 30 years in Beaumont, Texas. We've employed over this timeframe over 500 employees, and I've personally worked as the HR Director and grown a healthcare company from 70 employees to five, sorry, 600 employees. My reason for being here is I've heard a lot of comments in the last few days about race, statistics about the city, and I want to make one thing very clear. Racism does not have a face, it does not have a gender, it does not have a ethnic background. You do not have to be black, white, yellow, anything to be a racist. I can vouch for that because I myself have faced it. I can recognize when somebody is coming to me with racist intent. I have also had the privilege of serving on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Beaumont Police for the last two years, and I've had the privilege of working with Chief Assistant, the candidate from Beaumont. I'll refer to him as Mr. Beaumont from here out. Mr. Beaumont has never once approached me with a hint of racism. He has never once approached me with anything but a general regard and a willingness to cooperate. That committee was proposed and created so that the committee and the city could, so that the police department could have an outlet to the community within Beaumont. And in the last two years, I've never once had somebody come through, it's a monthly meeting, not once has racism been brought up, especially in regards to that individual. He has been present for every single meeting, he has been engaged in every single meeting. I say this with respect to all of the other candidates. You are not from Beaumont. You, you do not have the memories that come with being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the time.
Good afternoon, Rodney Robishow, 5255 Beaumont, Texas. Thank you all for coming and inviting us, and it's a privilege, I too sit on the board. Thanks to my councilman, Taylor Neal, put me on six, seven years ago.
No names.
Okay, my councilman. I echo what my brother on the school board, I mean, the police board said. Our police officers serve Beaumont, and Beaumont, as we know, is a multiple diverse city, and these guys are the best in the country, and you know that. And what we have today is a chief opening. What better than to put a person from Beaumont that's worked under the best chief in Beaumont's history, James Singletary. And he taught all of his men. I've had the privilege over the years to speak to a lot of them and know them personally. They, they love him, and the people that they arrest, they love the chief. And the Beaumont candidate has worked with him for 33 years. What do you think you can get? A coach on a ball team, he's got a player that plays for his coach, he gives him the best. And what we have, we've gone outside of Beaumont, which the committee met with the recruiter, and we asked specifically, we looked locally, whether it's the Golden Triangle, Lumberton, Orange, Jasper, we wanted local. We want someone who knows the people and how we live. We live together, we work together, we go to church together. By goodness, Jimmy Singletary has built.
No names, please.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I've called him that for 53 years. Served 53 years for this city, carrying a badge and a gun to protect every one of us, our parents, our children, our grandchildren. So in that mind, keep your mind open. We have the best police department in the country. Their arrest rates are second to none. I challenge anyone here to argue that point. We are safer because of our police department and our chief leadership, and the man behind him is going to do the same thing. So let's show respect. You know, we should not come to this table and bring gossip. That's not of God. When we speak of God, we speak the truth, and anyone that comes up here must speak the truth, because God will set you free. We're a community of one. We are one. We're Beaumont, and we're all from Beaumont. Those who aren't from Beaumont don't get it. But we all went to school together, we go to church together, we played together, we competed together, and now we live together under one roof, the city of Beaumont. So God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you.
John Rio, 6245 Grace Mount, Beaumont, Texas. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Williams, thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak today. For the last eight years, I have been the Chairman of the Beaumont Police Department Citizens Advisory Commission, appointed by the City Council and the Mayor. It's been my privilege to serve with the Beaumont Police Department in dealing with problems within our city. I have dealt with the candidate from Beaumont for the last eight years, gotten to know him very well. I also believe that we need to go by the qualifications that Mr. Williams and the City Council has set forth for this candidate. Nothing personal, nothing about where they come from, but the qualifications. And if we look at the qualifications of all four of our candidates, and I, along with Ms. Todd, was a member of the selection committee that was appointed by Mr. Williams this year. However, this year, the selection, I'm sorry, by the City Manager. However, this year, the selection committee was not allowed to voice our opinion upon who our candidate choice would be, or to rank, or to categorize any of the four candidates. So basically, we met for four hours the first night, then we met for eight hours to interview the four candidates, and that was the end of our charge. We were not allowed, as a committee, to talk among ourselves and to come up with the candidate that we felt best qualified for the city of Beaumont. I can tell you now that the friends of mine that I have shared that position with feel that the candidate of Beaumont is by far the only candidate that meets all of the requirements that you, the city of Beaumont, have set forth, including your last paragraph that says ideal candidate. There is only one candidate that meets those qualifications, and that candidate is the candidate from Beaumont. I'm not going to get into bringing up 20-year-old cases that the individual from Beaumont was not listed in or in any way, shape, or form tied to racism. In the eight years that I have run the board for the Beaumont Police Department, I can tell you that this officer has worked his way up after 33 years from a young patrol officer, through every single rank, through every single division within the Beaumont Police Department, to have his shot at one day being the chief. And now that we have him as the, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
5150 Plant Road, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Madam Attorney. I stand before you today to speak on this matter of great importance to our city, the selection of our new Police Chief. This decision will shape the future of our city's law enforcement, and by extension, the safety and well-being of every citizen in Beaumont. Our city faces a unique set of challenges and opportunities. In selecting a new Police Chief, we must ensure that the individual chosen embodies the qualities necessary to address these effectively. I believe there are several key attributes our community needs as its new Police Chief. First of all, integrity and accountability. First and foremost, our new Police Chief must possess unwavering integrity and a commitment to accountability. This individual must uphold the highest ethical standards and be transparent in their actions and decisions. Secondly, we need a Police Chief who is deeply committed to community engagement. This means actively building relationships with residents, understanding their concerns, and working together to find solutions which will foster trust and cooperation. Thirdly, we need a Police Chief that's committed to diversity and inclusion. Our city is a tapestry of different cultures, backgrounds, and perspectives. The new Police Chief must demonstrate a commitment to diversity and inclusion, ensuring that the police force reflects the community that it serves. Finally, we need a visionary leader who can look beyond the immediate challenges and envision a future where our city is safer, more just, and more resilient. This includes leveraging technology, adopting best practices from other jurisdictions, and being open to reform and innovation in policing. The selection of our new Police Chief is an opportunity to set a positive and progressive course for our city's future, and who, and who will work tirelessly to protect and serve our community with honor and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Singletary.
James Singletary, I live at 28 Avenue, the Oaks in Beaumont. Mr. Williams, Mayor, and Council. I've been in Beaumont my entire life, 76 years. I love this city. I hate what's been, from time to time, talked about this city. I love the Beaumont Police Department. I've been there 42 years. I love those officers. They're doing a heck of a job at a tough time. I have worked with Jason Plunkett, side by side, shoulder to shoulder. I'm sorry, candidate from Beaumont, for the last 12 years. I admire his, his respect, his integrity, and his character. And it sickens me to hear the things that are being said about this man. He is a Christian, he is a great father, a great husband. I hear just recently a great-grandfather. These officers need the right kind of leaderships in this tough time. I know candidate from Beaumont is the only one that can provide that type of leadership. I am very proud of what he's become inside the department and who he is and outside the department. I want you, ladies and gentlemen, to know that I support candidate from Beaumont 100%. He's the man that needs to lead Beaumont from now into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Javet.
Sean Javet, 2305 Evelyn, Beaumont, Texas. I wanted to thank Mr. Williams, you know-
City manager.
City manager. To put me on the committee in a, you know, in a, what I said in my opening statement, that what we, I'm a businessman, and what we like to do in our organizations, and I wanted to practice what I preach. So we promote one of our own, you know, from our organization. You work better, know, know about the organization, know about our employees, know about our city and everything else. So I would promote one of our local candidate. Not only that, and I wanted to experience, share my experience with our Beaumont PD. I am a community leader from Pakistani, Indian, and Bangladeshi community. They, you know, minority owns a lot of businesses in this city, especially the gas stations and grocery stores and gift and novelty stores. Every time any of these, our business owner have any problems, they call me. They don't even look at if it's 2:00 in the morning, they still call me. What I do, I pick up a phone and I call our Beaumont Police Department. Not only just the number, I have the privilege that work with the chief assistants and captains and others. They were always there, they treated us very fair. And I wanted to thank them, and I wanted to thank you guys giving us opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Aaron Reynolds, Jr.
City Manager, Mayor, Council. We cannot support the candidate from Beaumont to be the next police chief. In an article that's dated from 2010, where the city of Beaumont settled a lawsuit for a racist act toward a minority police officer for $65,000. We cannot support a promotion after learning this information. We need a chief that will represent the entire community and move us in a positive direction. The candidate from Beaumont currently does not even reside within the city of Beaumont after working in the city of Beaumont for multiple years. That in itself speaks volumes. He has chosen to pay property taxes in Lumberton versus the city of Beaumont he wants to represent. The culture of law enforcement through the city needs to be equitable, and it needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deandre Moore.
Good afternoon, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and City Council. I'm here to discuss a candidate that everyone is saying from Beaumont, or Mr. Beaumont, if you will. Yet, and it amazes me that this person is also not a resident of Beaumont but of Lumberton. So please accept the fact that I will refer to him as Mr. Lumberton. The fact that this person, Mr. Lumberton, is not a resident of the city, yet has served as assistant chief for years speaks volumes. If you think so highly of this city and want to represent it in such a way, why not live here? Why not ensure that those tax dollars go back into the city versus Lumberton? Every person that has been up here that is in support of Plunkett, most likely, or has-
Please refer to-
I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. Lumberton, got you. Looks nothing like me. Yet, the accusations of this candidate have been damaging for a reason. There is some truth to this. Before the recent findings or allegations against Mr. Lumberton came out, I felt that there was racial bias from this person, this assistant chief, based on conversations that we had. The issue is, is that Mr. Lumberton is a person that has told his officers to continue writing tickets for my black-owned business, restaurant, bar, or club, whatever you want to call it, the Parkland Calder. In the meeting with the city manager, Councilman Turner, Councilman Durio, Mr. Mayor, the city attorney, I asked specifically about a rumor that had gotten back to me from his officers about him wanting to issue a nuisance abatement, this being less than one month after we opened, where you all sat there with us. And he verified the fact that that was a part of his conversation. When asked why, he said that because he wanted to explore his options of what can be done for the Parkland Calder. This same conversation had never been had for any other restaurant or bar that had been open here. It didn't happen for Luke's, but it happened for this black-owned business. Each of you here has a utilitarian duty to do what's right for the greater good of the entire community. Racial biases and discrimination is something that is not of God, Pastor. But this candidate has displayed it more than one time. Mr. Mayor, the black and brown people of this community are the reason why you're sitting where you are, including me. I pushed for your election, and I ask that you not diminish my community to just your weekly neighborhood photo ops. But please make sure that you show us that you care about us by selecting the right candidate. We don't need someone from Beaumont to represent us. The prime example being our city manager, who, in my opinion, has been a breath of fresh air for this, for this city, ensuring that the, that the trajectory of this city moves in the right direction and is something positive that we can all look forward to. Remember again, racial biases is alive and well, and that is not something of God. Thank you.
Thank you.
W.R. Sam, Sr.
Good evening, Council, City Manager, Mayor. I'm not going to take up a lot of time, I'm just getting directly to the point. I've had the opportunity to come together and work with the Police Advisory Committee for a number of years. I also was chair of that committee at the beginning of it. There were some things that took place back in those days that created the Police Advisory Committee. And the thing was, how do we bring everybody together and resolve the problem and make it work to our advantage? I've had the opportunity to work with a number of officers and most of you on the council. And I think that me standing here today, I think I would be wrong if I didn't say that I have support for the young man that's from Beaumont. I firmly believe that we have to support people from Beaumont to continue the growth of Beaumont. We can't have people coming in and, and taking over and, and using someone else, because every one of us sit here is looking to grow up and be the top dog. And so I stand to support the young man from Beaumont and say, we continue doing what we're doing. We know the history of every, pretty well, everybody on this. And whenever there's an issue, there is a way to resolve it. And if things happened in the past and no one stepped up to address it at that time, I don't see the need to bring it up, okay? Because I'm a firm believer, if there's a problem, we reach out and we resolve it. Don't wait, don't put it on back burning. When we started the Police Advisory Committee, we know the issues that existed at that time, four major issues in this city. And I had to work with these policemen and everybody that we're talking about today to make changes, and we was able to accomplish that. And we will continue to do that. And I pray that you all make the right decision in the best interest of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladonna Sherwood. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council. I'm Ladonna Sherwood Haley of Beaumont, Texas. A proud Beaumont native, and I have been here my entire life. So when I come before you, I really come before you with some questions, few opinions, but mostly some questions like, what do you really think is best for Beaumont? What do we think about the demographics that make up Beaumont? What do we think is the climate of our current police relations in Beaumont? How do we improve Beaumont PD? How do we better support Beaumont PD? What characteristics should we look for in a person that's going to represent Beaumont PD? Well, I can tell you that after you answer those questions, you could come up with a list of things that you definitely do not want to represent Beaumont. There are things that stand in direct opposition of what we want for the Beaumont Police Department, right? Like, we don't want a cheater or a liar. We don't want a racist or discrimination. We don't want a negative cloud or scandal or debacle or bad history or baggage. If we're going to make a choice, right, we should be doing what's best for Beaumont. We should not accept mediocrity if we're going to make a choice. We should not accept excuses. We should not be looking for somebody to change their character or all of these different things. We should be simply getting the best of the best of what is out there as far as candidates are considered, right? Like, whether that's inside of Beaumont or outside of Beaumont or wherever they come from, if we want what's best, in fact, for Beaumont. And when you guys sit up here most days, it's about improving Beaumont, the betterment of Beaumont, building Beaumont. Well, let me tell you something. Building Beaumont is not taking pictures and showing up for events. Building Beaumont is not about tearing down buildings and making new buildings. Building Beaumont is not drainage and sewage and roadways. Building Beaumont comes from being honest and being, doing what's right. Today, I charge each and every one of you to be on the right side of history. I don't care if the candidate is from Beaumont or outside of Beaumont or anywhere near or around Beaumont, I want what's best for Beaumont. And I would ask you guys to be found on the right side of history, on the right side of history, doing what is right and proper. And if you don't have the best candidate in the group that you have, I say get another group.
Thank you.
Tony Prados.
Good afternoon, Council, City Attorney. Mr. Williams. I always say with that last name, my last name was Williams, so we've got to be kins some kind of way down the line. We have a serious thing that's going on right now. And my health is not all that good, so y'all bear with me for a few minutes. I never knew the Beaumont sergeant that's up for promotion or whatever it is he's running for office, that he lived in, Neale? Oh, Lumberton. See, so you learn something every day. This is a school of learning, and I watch you all, all the time. Y'all make right decisions. Sometime I feel y'all make wrong decisions, but it's your decision to make in our behalf. So all we're asking for, I'm not going to make a long, already mail my information to Mr. Williams, Tony Prados, look it up, a letter saying that what the information I'm hearing, it doesn't look good for Beaumont. That's all I'm saying, it does not look good for Beaumont. And a lot of you are in your position where a lot of us couldn't vote for you or a lot of us did vote for you. So we're asking, she made a very good statement. Let's see what we can do to improve Beaumont, not just keep handing it over and over and over to the same situations. Let's improve Beaumont. And I think I've even sent, may have sent you some stuff, Mr. Philshaw. I'm not sure, but anyway.
Stay away from names, please. Just positions, thank you.
That's away from what I'm getting ready to speak on, I, I hear you. As an old lady, my question to you is, what can you all do to improve Beaumont? I did not know this person, did not pay taxes here, but received a check from here. Neither did the other people that's running for office. So take that off the board and consider the pass. Who does the investigation on all of this stuff? Who works with a council to pick these people? All we heard was one man, Rio. You know, well, really, that's my law firm. Sorry about that, babe. No name, no name, no name, but that, Rio. But anyway, just improving Beaumont, improving Beaumont, please, consider. Or don't consider-
Y'all please be quiet in the audience.
Or don't consider what we're asking you not to put in place. I don't know this person, I don't know how many of them know this person. But if you take a look around, even in the hallway-
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Vernon Darden.
To the City Manager, thank you for giving me an opportunity to work on the selection committee. I too was on the committee, and I'm not here to propose any individual as the candidate. I fully expect the union to come and support a union member. I fully expect the police to support a policeman. I fully expect the preachers to support a preacher. I've worked with every police chief that's alive. I'm 76 years old, like Mr. Rio. I work with every police chief that's alive, some of them are here today. I've been in every police chief's office and talked to them about the problems in Beaumont, Texas, the crime and the racism within the city and within the police department. A man came up here early and talked about the advisory committee. It spawned from an idea that I had for a police review board out of a system of oppression in the police department, to get an idea that we could look at some of this stuff and get it fixed. So and the advisory board was created. When I went to the question-answer period, there were about 12 or 14 of us on that board. About three of us asked questions and followed up questions. I really went to the board with an open mind to learn from all the candidates. Have not sent out any emails to anybody in the community. I have not done any phone calls to anybody in the community. I have not tried to shape the outcome of this search with anybody in the community. I'm here to support the process. I'm here to ask that this council support- I'm here to ask that this council support the City Manager and the decision it makes. There's a lot of things we're asking from police chiefs. No one person can do it alone. All the people sitting behind me, being the union, people in town, out of town, every committee, every board, every 501(c)(3), every fraternity, every sorority has to support the decision. I only ask that this city support the decision that the City Manager and this board makes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Coffin, Jr.
Mr. Mayor, Council, City Attorney, Manager. My name's Frank Coffin, 6455 Ellington Lane, Beaumont, Texas. I was at one time the police chief. I've been in the command staff of the Beaumont Police Department for a long time. When you heard the comments before about that individual that's getting all this, this press or whatever you want to call it, I was very familiar with what went on with that. Now, let me just say I'm real disappointed in the people that are using that incident to make this angle, that, that Mr. Beaumont is not the right candidate. Mr. Beaumont was not in a position to make those decisions. Other people made those decisions. I've, I've been around Mr. Beaumont. He's worked for me for 25 years. When I was in the different positions that I held, it would not be unusual for Mr. Beaumont to come into my office and sit down and we would talk about what's going on, how to handle it and stuff like that. Now, I've not been involved in the selection process on the other candidates. So I'm not going to say that they are not as qualified as Mr. Beaumont or that they're less qualified because I just don't know because I've not had interaction with them. But I can tell you that I've had private conversations with Mr. Beaumont off the record as which I'm sure each one of you have had with people you've worked with when you wanted to find out what somebody felt about something or how they thought it would be best to handle it. And they, they might confide in you information they would not want put on the front page of the paper. Well, I can tell you right now, Mr. Beaumont is not a racist individual. Now, I'm really disappointed if this is the best that you can come up with as to why you don't want Mr. Beaumont. Mr. Beaumont has worked with the union from the get-go, and I have no idea of what is in your head as to how you're going to or who you're going to appoint. But I can stand here and tell you for a fact because I've been through it, that if you think somebody can come in from Sydney, Australia and, and make personnel decisions and fly by without being skinned up from the Beaumont Police Department Union, you're mistaken because I was a, a member of the original union.
Thank you, sir.
Christopher Jones.
Good afternoon, Manager, Mayor and Council. We, some concerned citizens of Beaumont and the NAACP Beaumont Branch strongly oppose Assistant Police Chief from Beaumont appointment as Chief of Police. The selection process has shown bias in his favor, and we believe it fails to reflect our community's best interests and concerns. The candidate from Beaumont's tenure includes significant issues of racial discrimination and misconduct. Apparently, he condones incidents of sexual misconduct which underscores ongoing leadership and problems within the department. His inaction against Officer misconduct has fostered community distrust. His willingness to lead and set a standard is amiss and demonstrates severe issues within the department as he has served for years. Current leadership and the Beaumont Police Officers Association's failure to reprimand existing officers and/or recruit and hire more minorities to its force is unacceptable. Moreover, county, state and federal agencies can successfully recruit qualified minority residents from Beaumont. We believe that the true, that true reform management must look outside the current ranks. We urge you to select a candidate with integrity, community over union, community engagement, higher standards and a commitment to reform. Beaumont needs a leader who will foster trust and justice, and A C O P is not it. I am submitting written letters from some concerned citizen of Beaumont and the NAACP to the clerk for the record. Christopher Jones, some concerned citizens.
Thank you.
Isaac Muton.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm just here, I don't have any fancy titles like everybody else who spoke for me. I'm just a tired father. I've got four kids. We moved back to Beaumont about eight years ago. I'm, I'm tired of being concerned for them when they go out, when they're going to the skating rink, when they're going, going to the bowling alley, whenever. I'm tired of looking at my video cameras to make sure nobody's pulling up to my car and breaking into my car or whatever. I'm tired of looking over my shoulder. If we go the same direction that we're going right now and no change, I mean, what, we, all of y'all said, came up here and y'all said, vote for me. We want change, want to create a better Beaumont. But all the thing I'm seeing right now and I'm hearing right now is we want more of the same. It, it's kind of funny to me because everybody's saying people are qualified for the job. And the only things I heard is, is a good man. He's a good father. He's a Christian. Ain't all the candidates that. I, I haven't heard anything different to change my mind about anything. I sit in the thing, I talk to these people. There are better candidates than the, the one we are discussing. We're only focused on this one. And there's three other people on here who are highly qualified. I'm not even going to get into the racist thing because if you put the racist thing aside, I think there's still better candidates out there. I, I don't know. But there, there needs to be a change, man. I'm, I'm so sick of Beaumont just living in the same, like the kids say, we just mid. We just mid, we just living in the same old thing. I, I believe, and I know people disagree. People with rich friends say this. Me and my poor friends, we think this other thing. Is there, it needs to be a change here in Beaumont. You guys out here, you guys are supposed to be the new wave of Beaumont, the new future of Beaumont. You know, we want you in here. We want you to make a decision not based on your political party, not based on who's your friends with and who you drink with. We want you to make a decision based on who is the best person, who's going to create change, who's going to change stuff out in these streets.
Please, everyone, let the person at the podium speak.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting down. I ain't, I ain't for all this talking and stuff. I hate coming up here because I got to leave work, you know, to come up here and talk about this BS when people, we, we know there's clearly people who, who are better for, for Beaumont out here. And we're sitting here debating just because there's a friend or this or that. Nobody's even mentioning what the great things some of the other candidates are doing or whatever. We're, we're sitting in, just make the right decision. I want, I'll put you, we put y'all up here because we want to trust you and we want you to be courageous in tough moments. Right now, what we sitting in is a tough moment. You have to be courageous. You're going to have to say, you're going to have to pick what's best for you, whether your ward likes it or not. That's what I want you to do, whether I like it or not, whether I put you in the seat or not. If you feel that your choice is best choice, I got to be able to trust you and you got to be courageous to pick the best person for the job, not based on anything other than they're the best.
Thank you.
Juliana Reyes Bailey.
Good afternoon. Juliana Reyes Bailey, 2125 Calder, Beaumont, Texas. I was going to say, well, I'll introduce myself. A lot of you don't know me. I've been here since 2018. I was the chair of the committee. I appreciate those who supported putting me on the committee and the fellow committee members who made me the chair. This entire pad is notes about all the candidates. I think I have the most notes out of anybody. And I listened and I took a lot of notes. But one thing that surprised me today that is kind of changing what I'm going to say is what I've heard from everybody today. We hear a lot about wanting to grow Beaumont and attract people. So, you know, have them move here. Sounds like those of us that are not from here are not very welcome. We don't get it. Why would anyone want to move here if this is the attitude that we have to keep things the same and that those from outside are not welcome? I may not be from here, but I married a fifth-generation Beaumont man who is a great representation of Beaumont. I love Beaumont. I don't want to leave. But that kind of attitude and that kind of talk, frankly, from everybody, that's not very welcoming. I will tell you as far as the candidates. I haven't heard anyone talk about Ms. Joy's ideas for retention and bonuses, including a partnership with Lamar, her ideas about officer wellness. I haven't heard anybody talk about Ms. Steinbrenner's community engagement ideas, her ideas for incentives for retention.
Please use their.
I'm so sorry. The, the first candidate I spoke of was the candidate from Detroit. And the second one was the candidate from Los Angeles or the candidate from Vancouver. His innovative strategies on social media for recruitment, the Neighborhood Officers Police Program, the Domestic Violence Prosecution Center, the use of translation software for the growing Spanish-speaking population like here in Beaumont, like myself. I am a family lawyer in Beaumont and I practice also in the child welfare space. So I speak for families and I speak for children. And I will tell you, everybody in this room, within a mile of you, there is a child being abused right now. You may not think it. You may not think it's happening in your zip code, but it is. I see it every day. If you want to see, the court is open, the 279th every Tuesday at 8:30 and the 317th every Thursday at 1:30. That is open for everybody. And you will hear atrocities. And so if we want to attract change, if we want to attract anybody who wants to come here and do positive things for this city, I'm not here to support any particular candidate. I'm here to encourage and challenge everyone, you all sitting in front of me and everyone behind me. Think about how you can make a difference and change. How can you attract new ideas? That's all. Everyone was qualified. Everyone had great things to say. I think we would be lucky to have any of them. And thank you.
Hello, Sean Proctor.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, Madam Attorney, City Council. As, as everyone else said, and I was fortunate enough to be on the board, one thing that I say about this, and I say to everybody in this room, we tend to not want to see an elephant in the room. We are what we are. This is Beaumont. We have issues that we have to overcome. We have issues in just diversity. It is what it is. That's not only Beaumont, that's this country. There is a lot of tension in this country right now. Race relations is one of the things that's been a big issue across the country. I think when we say, I've been a proponent and I'm sort of like Ms. Reyes when she said, I think sometimes when we look at outside, inside, if you're trying to move somewhere and you are attorney, you're a new, we tell our children to what? Get an education, go somewhere else, be somebody, go to school, find your job, do those things. If we tell our children not to go somewhere and be somebody else or do something else, where do we are? We tell our children to come back home, stay home, help your community grow, come back and be a part, come back and be a part of the change. We want our children to do better. We want our children to be better. We want them to experience new things and just come up with new ideas and be those places. I think people are people no matter where they go. No matter where you go, if you're going somewhere, you want to be accepted. If you're at home, you want to be accepted. You just want a fair shot. We all make mistakes. We all say things, do things and other things that happen that we're not proud of. That's life. It's lessons, it's learned. I can say a whole lot of things about how I've been treated here in Beaumont. But you know what? I want to get past that. Not to say that happened, but it's learning experience. Some of the things that I say when you talk about experience and being all those things, I ran for office. A lot of times people say, you wasn't qualified. You didn't have the experience. How do you get it unless you try? You can't start here. Where do you start? You're getting hired for a job. You want to get a new job. You're a new attorney, you're a new place. How do you get there if nobody gives you a chance? Sometimes in, within is good. I'm sure like what Ms. Ave said, inside. I've been a prominent of that. But then you have to look at too. Sometimes you have to have new things to shake it up. It's life. You start a business, you take good, you take bad, you take all of the things and you, you change it is how you look. I think it's what's best. And at the end of the day, you are, City Council, City Manager, opposed with this. If we voted for you, we trust you, we think that you got a best for our city, then whatever choice you make, that's your choice. That's what it is. If you're an executive of your business, you ain't got to ask nobody else how you going to run your company. You got businesses on here. They ain't asking their employees what they got to do.
Thank you.
Make the decision that's best. Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Norris.
Okay, so I'm nervous, this is my first time, but my name's Stephanie Norris, 971 Semino Drive. Coming here today has been an experience and a lesson that is very saddening to see that in this day and time we are still reverting back to something that has been going on through this world a very, very, very long time. And people are paying, still paying for things that happened in the past. Today, I come here and I ask that you choose somebody that is from Beaumont. I have recently been here four years and I love Beaumont. And I've planned to, continues to stay here in Beaumont and see it thrive. However, the fact that we have to revert to it being a black, white, Hispanic diversity, if we look at our city council, our members, is it really diverse? So with that being said, I am supporting the candidate from Beaumont. There's no disrespect. I went to the meet and greet and saw the other candidates and I feel that candidate Beaumont is the best choice for Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there's anyone else to speak, Mayor, that's all that I have.
All right. We do not know how long executive session will last, but we will not be closing City Hall, so you're all welcome to stay. At this point, we're recessed into executive session.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the city manager's recommendation for the new police chief.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the city manager's recommendation.
Have we...
I'm sorry. Haven't named anyone. I'm sorry. For the record, the manager would have to name someone before we even do a motion and second it. Sorry.
Okay, Mayor. This is one of the harder things that you do as a city manager. Anytime you do into appointing a police chief is really, really important to the community and divides the community. And that's why we went through such an extensive process and getting to this point for this. We wanted all of the community to be involved and have input, even up until today in what we were saying today. We had good candidates. We had all good candidates. If they made it to the final four, if they wouldn't have made it to the final four, they wouldn't have been a great candidate. So I applaud all the people that applied and made it to that point, and they were great. So there's nothing against anybody, because if you made it to this far, because out of 58 people, and it was part of my decision-making process, it got everybody to that point, for sure. And then my decision-making, I never consider race and racism. I think of what's best for this city. I think of crime, and crime's been the issue in this city. We have one of the highest crime rates there is, whether it's driving or following crime, et cetera. So my decision, as I showed to you, was based upon that, nothing else. That's not who I am. And that's the reason for that. So based upon that, and again, I thank all of the applicants for what they're doing, but I'd like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Troy Price as police chief of Beaumont.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the city manager's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. For item number one, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the city manager's recommendation.
Have we...
I'm sorry. Haven't named anyone. I'm sorry. For the record, the manager would have to name someone before we even do a motion and second it. Sorry.
Okay, Mayor. This is one of the harder things that you do as a city manager. Anytime you do into appointing a police chief is really, really important to the community and divides the community. And that's why we went through such an extensive process and getting to this point for this. We wanted all of the community to be involved and have input, even up until today in what we were saying today. We had good candidates. We had all good candidates. If they made it to the final four, if they wouldn't have made it to the final four, they wouldn't have been a great candidate. So I applaud all the people that applied and made it to that point, and they were great. So there's nothing against anybody, because if you made it to this far, because out of 58 people, and it was part of my decision-making process, it got everybody to that point, for sure. And then my decision-making, I never consider race and racism. I think of what's best for this city. I think of crime, and crime's been the issue in this city. We have one of the highest crime rates there is, whether it's driving or following crime, et cetera. So my decision, as I showed to you, was based upon that, nothing else. That's not who I am. And that's the reason for that. So based upon that, and again, I thank all of the applicants for what they're doing, but I'd like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Troy Price as police chief of Beaumont.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the city manager's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. For item number one, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we reject the city manager's recommendation.
The newest motion has to get voted on first.
So council hasn't...
The existing rules.
Hasn't adopted Robert's Rules of Order. So under the adopted rules by council, Councilman Neal is correct. So if he receives a second for that motion, then that...
I second that.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Felschall.
So we're discussing the second motion, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Williams, each candidate had a quality that is obvious. As you look at this list of four, as you said, they all seem very qualified. And I appreciate their interest in our community. I know that your decision was extremely hard. I know that. As a council member, I've heard from citizens from across Beaumont, male, female, black, white, brown. And the overwhelming response that I got was to promote from within. And when I say overwhelming, it was overwhelming. It wasn't close. I know that this is a very consequential vote that I will cast today. I know that. I understand how it impacts the future of our city. And although I would like to support your decision, I need to, number one, let the citizens know that I represent, that I heard them. I need to support Beaumont PD and honor 32 years of service and give hope to the officers of future advancement, that if you work hard, you serve faithfully, if you're loyal to our city, then that city will recognize that. And I need to follow my own personal assessment of candidates and their qualifications. And so for those three reasons, I'm going to show support from promoting within. And I went through all this because I wanted you to know that I took this very serious, and I wasn't very flippant about my decision. And I appreciate your hard work and all that you did, but I just can't support your candidate.
Councilman Getz.
I can't add much more to what Councilmember Felschall said, because like Councilmember Felschall, I have had an overwhelming number of my constituents asking me to support our police departments, police officers' associations, endorsement of Assistant Chief Plunkett, and to promote from within. I have asked the city attorney if Chief Plunkett has any disciplinary issues on his record. No. I'm really, really dismayed by the smear tactics that have cropped up over the last two weeks to try to assassinate the character of Assistant Chief Plunkett. Totally, totally not true. A lot of that's not true. So, Mr. Williams, I respect you very much, but I can't support this recommendation.
Councilman Duryo.
Yeah. Everyone I've heard for, they tell me, and it's easy to find, Beaumont is the most dangerous city in Texas.
and divides the community. That's why we went through such an extensive process and getting to this point for this. We wanted all of the community to be involved and have input, even up until today and what we were saying today. We had good candidates, uh, we had all good candidates. If they were, if they, they made it to the final four, if they wouldn't have made it to the final four, they wouldn't have been a great candidate. So I applaud all the people that applied and made it to that point, and they were great. So there's nothing against anybody, 'cause if you made it to this far, 'cause a lot of, out of 58 people, um, and it was part of my decision-making process, I got everybody to that point, uh, for sure. Um, and then my decision-making, I never considered race and racism. I think, I think of what's best for this city. I think of crime, and crime's been the issue in this city. Uh, we have one of the highest crime rates there is, uh, whether it's driving or, or filing crime, et cetera. So my decision, as I showed to you, was based upon that, nothing else. That's not who I am. Um, you know, and that's the reason for that. So based upon that, and again, I thank all of the applicants for what they're doing, but I'd like to, uh, recommend appointment of Mr. Troy Price as police chief for, for one.
Okay. Did you?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the city manager's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, uh, for item number one. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we reject the city manager's recommendation for police chief.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
We have to deal with a motion. When there's, the newest motion has to get voted on first.
So council hasn't, um...
The existing rules.
Hasn't, hasn't adopted Robert's Rules of Order. So under the adopted rules by council, Councilman Neal is correct. So if he receives a second for that motion in that mo...
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Mayor. Councilman Felschau.
So we're, we're, we're discussing the second motion, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Williams, each candidate had a quality that is obvious. As you look at this list of four, as you said, they, they all seem very qualified, um, and I appreciate their interest in our community. I know that your decision was extremely hard. I know that. Um, as a council member, I've heard from citizens from across Beaumont, male, female, black, white, brown, and the overwhelming, overwhelming response that I got was to promote from within. And when I say overwhelming, it was, it was overwhelming. It wasn't close. Um, I know that this is a very consequential vote that I will cast today. I know that. I understand how it impacts the future of our city. And although I would like to support your decision, I need to, number one, let the citizens know that I represent and I heard them. I need to support Beaumont PD and honor 32 years of service and give hope to the, uh, officers of future advancement, that if you work hard, you serve faithfully, if you're loyal to our city, then that city will recognize that. And I need to follow my own personal assessment of candidates and their qualifications. And so for those three we, reasons, I must show support from, from promoting within. And I went through all this because I wanted you to know that I took this very serious and I wasn't very flippant about my decision. And I appreciate your hard work and all that you did, but I just can't support your, your candidate.
Councilman Getz?
I can't add much more to what Councilmember Felschau said because, like Councilmember Felschau, I have had an overwhelming number of my constituents asking me to support our police departments, uh, police officers associations, endorsement of, uh, Assistant Chief Plunkett, uh, and to promote from within. I have, uh, asked the city attorney if, uh, Chief Plunkett has any disciplinary issues on all of his record. No. I'm really, really dismayed by the smear tactics that have cropped up over the last two weeks to try to assassinate the character of, uh, Assistant Chief Plunkett. Totally, totally not, not true. A lot of, a lot of that's not, not true. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Williams, I respect you very much, um, but I can't support this recommendation.
Councilman Durio?
Yeah. Everyone I've heard for, they tell me, and it's, it's easy to find, Beaumont is the most dangerous city in Texas. Yes, you can look it up, it's everywhere. It's easy to find. My constituency said, "It's time for a change. It's time for a change." Mr. Williams presented us with an outstanding candidate, the most qualified candidate out of everybody on the list. The only thing that, uh, some of the other, uh, Beaumont candidate had was that he was local. Well, we try, uh, we gotta change what's going on in Beaumont. Some, some of my people, uh, some of my cohorts up here say, "Well, you know, can a police chief, uh, help prevent crime?" Well, I say that's part of his job. It's part of his job to come up with ways to help prevent crime, to help lower the crime rate. And basically, if you hire a local, I have nothing against these guys. I'm doing what I was elected to do, what my folks trust me to do. They trust me to make the best decision for them. And I've gotten calls and, and my, and in my opinion, it, it is time for a change. I don't like having a moniker of being the most dangerous city in Texas. And I don't like it either. And I do feel that a police chief can change that. But I feel that, I mean, we've had a, uh, it's, it's just not happening right now. It's just not happening. It showed, Mr. Williams, we, we were able to see videos of stuff that's on YouTube, you know? There's, not even local, this is on YouTube about Beaumont, Texas, and how dangerous it is. And, and it's my people, my constituents, my family, everybody said, "It's time for a change. We have a golden opportunity to make a change." But, um, that's, that's my opinion. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a response to Councilman Durio, um, my opinion of who's the most qualified is obviously different than yours, and that's why we're down here right now. Um, and I'm the one upstairs that made the comment that I don't think a police chief is going to greatly impact our crime rate in Beaumont, Texas. There's nobody in this room that denies we have a crime problem in Beaumont, but it's not the Beaumont Police Department's fault. So...
May I respond? He did call me out. I feel it's the Beaumont Police Department's job to find a way to curb crime in Beaumont, Texas. It's part of their responsibility, and that falls upon the chief, who's the leader of the department, to come up with plans and ideas to lower these crime rates.
Can I respond? 'Cause he looked at me. The, uh, what about the capture rate for Beaumont PD? It's excellent.
Excuse me?
What about the capture rate for Beaumont PD?
Well, as I, as I said upstairs, you know, they said they got a, uh, they have a good rate of checking, uh, catching, uh, these murderers, and I said, "Maybe it's 'cause we have so many murders." You know, that's why they got a good rate. They're good at catching them, 'cause we have a lot.
Can we call for the vote, Mayor?
I have a comment.
Councilman Samuel?
It's a shame that how you feel about your city, how safe it is, depends on where you live in the city. As I said upstairs, I have no problem with, uh, Detective Plunkett. But we have to do something to change. We have to see police officers in all parts of our city interacting with the citizens. It's not just to respond to crime, but patrol. Look for other ways to make things better in our city. I hate, again, as I stated upstairs, part of our job is to move our city forward, unify our cities, and to make it a place that we would want our mothers, our fathers, our children feel safe in living. I appreciate the process that was brought forth. I think it was fair. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, uh, before we call the vote, Councilman Turner?
Uh, Mr. Manager, I just want to thank you for your work and your time and the strenuous that you went through with this process. Uh, one of my biggest concerns was going through this process, you know, if we felt good and already had, you know, minds made up and knew the direction we wanted to go in, why not make the motion and say, "Let's go in that direction prior to going through this process, using taxpayer dollars and actually going out and recruiting and doing all the things we actually went through." We had a process to get to know candidates. We had an option to go and listen to the interviews. I think it's extremely important that we need the people who also spoke in opposition to know, "We did hear you." At the same time, the people who wanted to speak in representative, representation within, we heard you as well. In order to grow a population, specifically with the median age being 33, you have to have a safe community. And it's gonna be extremely important that we work together to do so. I haven't had some of the best experiences working with everybody to get there as far as reducing crime, specifically dealing with the nightlife topic. But I hope in whatever direction we go in, we can get to a solution. 'Cause right now, we've been talking about it for too long, and our crime rate isn't changing, and everybody in the community needs to really feel safe. I appreciate everybody who applied. I have nothing against the local candidate. We can say it now, we don't have to say Beaumont no more, right? But I have nothing against the, the, the local candidate. But I do feel we truly need to look at alternative options to kinda reduce the current conditions that we're in as a city. Every time we meet with industry, every time we meet with big investors, the first thing they say, "I don't know if I want to invest my money into the city of Beaumont because our crime rate is too high." And will a police chief do it all by himself? Absolutely not. It's gonna take everybody in the community working together, and a real conscious effort, not a fake one, but a conscious one, to get to where we need to be. So I appreciate the process. I do support your recommendation and what you did, and we'll see what the will of the council is moving forward.
Well, I, I would like to say that, uh, I have much respect for our city manager, Kenneth Williams, and I've seen him always act with character and integrity, and the way our system is set up, we get to, uh, our council is a part of the process. And we, I was, I was present at the interviews, and I was able to hear all the questions and the questions that the, uh, committee came up with. And I believe that, uh, there were several things, and all of them were good candidates. But to me, having someone that has served within a department for 33 years is important. Somebody with disaster experience, which was asked about by the committee, that, that was one of the questions they chose, I think is important. And I know that this is divisive in the community, that we have challenges here in this community. I expect us to continue to address them. I expect us to solve them. This is what we've been put here to do. But I appreciate you, Mr. Williams. I appreciate all the candidates as well. With that, if there's... Yes.
Um, could you, Mr. Manager, can you explain this part of the process? If a, if a chief is not, uh, selected today, then where would we go from here?
Well, and, and legal can add to this, but basically, the city manager recommends an appointment and council confirms, and I'm not prepared to bring another name forward today on any other candidate.
Also, I would like to know, uh, is it appropriate to ask for a individual vote?
You asked him for a...
Yes.
Um, that's at the discretion of the mayor, but there's...
Yes. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with a, with a roll call vote, but if we just read the motion that we're voting on for clarity for everybody up here.
The motion on the floor is to reject the city manager's, um, recommendation. And then there's still a pending, uh, if that motion fails, then the secondary motion would be to approve the manager's recommendation.
So Mayor Wrist?
I vote for denying.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner?
I vote against deny.
Councilmember Durio?
I vote against denying.
Councilmember Getz?
I vote to deny the request.
Councilmember Felschau?
To deny.
Councilmember Samuel?
I vote against denying.
And Councilmember Neal?
I'm against the city manager's recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, it's, uh, time for city council comments. I'll start, uh, with you, Councilman Durio.
Well, I think, I think I've already said it all. Uh, Mayor, um, I like the process. I think the process was good. I think the manager, uh, presented us with an outstanding candidate, and, uh, as of right now, we still don't have a police chief. Don't know when we will. That's all.
Councilman Getz?
No comment.
Councilman Turner?
No comment.
Councilman Felschau?
Again, Mr. Williams, thank you for your hard work. I, I do respect you and, and all that you put into this. And I will say that, uh, in looking at the candidates, there's a lot of things that came into play for me in making my decision. One of them, or I mentioned the three of them before, but, uh, I will say that Mr. Price was my second choice. And then even, uh, a moment ago, you mentioned that he was a preacher, and so I like him even more. So I just want you to know that it, it wasn't so much a vote against him. It was just, I felt this was the right decision at this time, so... But again, thank you for all your hard work.
Councilman Samuel?
I have no comment.
No comment there.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank everybody who participated in this. I would like to thank the people who served on that, on the committee. Yeah, I wanted a, a wide, diverse group from the community, people who had opposing views, and we got that, and we got those comments back from everybody. And I applaud them for those comments. There's one thing about the committee, though, uh, it was explained to each committee member that they would not rank or put that together before that commi, as a condition of serving on that committee. So that was explained to them verbally and in writing, that they would not be making a decision or a ranking, so that's clear. And I copied the council on those emails, in which I communicated that too. But, uh, thank all of the candidates. Thank all the people. We have outstanding candidate, and again, Jason got to number four. I wouldn't have taken him that far if I didn't think he was outstanding candidate, so, uh, I don't want anybody to think that, 'cause it's obvious he made it that far. He's a great candidate, for sure. So, uh, thank everybody for the process, and we just look forward to, uh, continuing.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to thank everyone who's, who stayed. When I came in here the second time, I was really surprised to see that this place was still full. So, uh, this was really a concerning issue to the, to the citizens, and, uh, thank all of you for, uh, coming and, and participating in this process.
I also want to thank everybody and appreciate all of the citizens that made comments and participated in the, uh, in the interview process, and certainly our city staff. And we will continue on this process. Uh, God bless this city. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.